So we came over to the store.
Good morning.
Oh, good.
Let's stand for the pledge in a moment of silence and write a prayer, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kramer in attendance. Commissioner O'Rourke.
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Present.
Commissioner Augier.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. And this is a special meeting and special thanks to Mr. Pleva for coming today. First thing on our agenda is some public comment. Anybody wish to make public comment? Mr. Nap.
Okay. Let me say a few things about that. Don't want to read them or whatever. Things got in the way. So I want to address that so-called G-Right Parade. A few people actually commented that those who criticized it probably never had an LGBTQ 40 plus to 72 area. Well, back in the day when they kept themselves, I didn't know. They just kept to themselves and what about their business? There are still some of them around. Around town, with complaints. You know it, but they don't make issue with it. Anyway, I don't think it's a good idea to have such things in public with small impressionable children. Can see it and have people acting like it's normal or something. Something to be proud of. So I just don't think it's a good idea. Now, I want to go on to the septic business because I wasn't clear about how the new septic organs will affect your properties in a trust, which mine is. The trust doesn't, you know, technically legally change hands. So I don't know if we can have the health department all come back in and maybe explain it a little more clearly, but I really didn't understand what would happen if I was all taken care of when I die. It was just, you know, stay in the present and the executive picture. But I wasn't clear about that. The next point is my grammar self coming forward. I don't understand why we vote yea or nay at the same side. I just don't. How can you vote aye when you mean nay? So I think you should basically vote either yea or nay or aye or nay. And I couldn't find anything online or articles or orders to say differently. The last thing, which actually is why you started this meeting early and rather address the point, I thought closing the recycling center at Cedar was terrible. And I don't know where apparently the neighbors were complaining about illegal dumping, which there is, people are using it for a landfill, you know, to hide it back behind the dump. You go back and use the back containers. You see stuff sitting back there that wouldn't fit in containers, so we're just coming. But however the neighbors all these years, I've been visiting that site for 10 years now, and nobody's complained about it that I know of the whole time. It's had to be great to pave it unless you like to get in the line of child every time you go in here. So I don't know where all they were, and I'm glad to see the funding's agreed to take care of it. And that's why you have your meeting and why I showed up for a meeting, because I want to say I'm real glad of that.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you so much. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nap. And I forgot to tell the public that our new rules are three minutes for public comment instead of five. But thank you. Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? Yes.
Hi. My name is Charlene Burchette. I'm from Solon Township. And my comment's going to take another three minutes, and that's why I brought you guys some copies. So we'll just try to be brief on this recycling situation. First of all, the new bunting site that Ray has been working very hard on, trying to get some other place to put the recycling. There's no room there. That parking lot is already dangerous. There's tons of people in there, and I spoke with one of the drivers this week down at the recycling, and he doesn't feel like he could safely ingress or egress that site. It's slanted, so it's going to have to be leveled out. And then there was the other site that was picked out, trying to fill in some wetland over at the post office. But my point is this. For many years, Jim Lautner, supervisor, Solon Township Jim Lautner, has picked on the recycling. He really just doesn't want recycling because he doesn't like recycling. I drove past the current recycling site yesterday. Beautiful trees. You can't even hardly see it. Trudy Gallant has done an exemplary job of managing the whole county recycling program as far as I could see. And I did look at the financials. There's a lot of complaints posed by Solon Township, like, let's see, does not look like, doesn't look good, too trashy, although that does not reconcile with the condition of supervisor Lautner's farm. Though he used his farm show junk car lot, which is a violation of Solon Township zoning ordinances, and he's been a victim of violation of that for decades. Oh, that people leave things outside of bins, although Trudy has found some ambassadors to oversee the extraneous cleanup at Cedar recycling site, which is working really fine. And they want to continue to maintain the grading and snow plowing, but they would in spite of it because we have many heavy sports river usage, we have vendor trucks passing through for lunch breaks, we have Cedar pumpkin fest, et cetera, et cetera. They're still going to grate and plow that on their own dime. And so it's been a real nitpicky thing. That site is working beautifully. It's a perfectly accessible site, and the trees are outgrowing up there high. I think that it's basically a matter of Jim Lautner not liking it. But if you really want to add and have another alternative for recycling site would be a really good site. There's an excellent site in Solon Township property that is very flat, easily accessible, and has plenty of room that can be dedicated site at the old Solon Schoolyard, just down the road from Supervisor Lautner's farm.
And thank you.
There's no historical site.
The three minutes are up. Thank you.
It would be perfect.
You said you had something to give us? Okay. Thank you. You may. May I give it to the administrator? Thank you. Any other public comment? Well, thank you all for coming today. Any commissioner comment? Yes, Commissioner Lautner.
I'm going to take a moment to briefly remind our chair that public comment is not to be personal attack on people, if we may, and be very cautious of that. I think it is very, well, in the first place, it's very untrue that Supervisor Lautner is opposed to recycling. Mr. Lautner has done everything he can to keep that site in Solon. He has supported the extension six years ago for a five-year extension at that site. And the board, as a majority, asked for several things at that site, such as the camera, which the county has worked extremely hard to get a camera in there to take care of the issues, and there are a lot of issues. The cameras have never worked, so the issues have continued to happen. When that five-year plan expired, he supported a one-year extension, as did the whole board, another one-year extension to that site. Solon Township Board waited several months for the agreement that they agreed to for another one-year extension to that site and didn't hear anything for several months. If that came to us in November, where I made the motion to give that site one more one-year extension while we continued to work on the new site for the Solon Township area, I made that motion, and this board did not support that motion for a one-year extension to that site. So here we are today. Now, let's go back a little bit further. Solon Township has been putting Solon Township dollars into that site. That site, as someone mentioned the surveys, there's been several surveys of that site, is used by Casson residents, Glen Arbor residents, Commissioner Augier herself said she uses it, Cleveland Township, Centreville Township, all use that site. But when Solon asked those townships if they would help, or maybe Mrs. Gall, I asked them, if they would help fund and pay for the repairs of that site, none of those townships were interested in it. When we asked them if they would host the site in their townships, none of those townships were interested in it. So Solon Township has been spending their own money on the grading because the site where it is at right now is a fill site. It will never be a good site. It can't be paved. It continually needs to be graded. The township has been buying the fill for it, spending their own time grading that site, and only being reimbursed for the gasoline. And the snow plowing, the dollars we allocate for the upkeep was not enough. And so they have done everything they could to keep that site there and not have it cost Solon Township residents money because it is not a township program. It is a county program. So someone, you could say we failed Solon Township, but they did everything that they could to keep that site there.
Thank you. Commissioner Augier.
Just one little correction. When the board turned down the one-year extension, it was because of extra fees that we would then have to, that all the other sites would want, and the program can't afford that. That's the only reason we turned it down. So thank you for that information. Commissioner Lautner and I just wanted to add that one little piece.
Any other commissioner comments? Yes, Mr. O'Rourke.
Well, the first thing I learned is not to upset Trudy Gallant. That's the first thing I learned out in the public. I went down, I took pictures of the site at Bunting's. The only problem I have was that you can pass these down. The snow backed up is from our massive snowfall that we had, and they have to bring in a tractor and a blower probably three times a year to clean up the snow. It's going to be crowded. Maybe we can work with it, but the snow plowing is really going to be an issue. So thank you.
And we will, after we hear the proposal, have more time to raise questions about it. Any other commissioner comments? I wanted to let Mr. Nap know that the Health Department is putting together a little one-page handout that explains the implementation of the septic inspection ordinance, and that'll be coming out very soon.
So before that, you ask the Health Department to send anyone?
Sure. We will. Thank you. Any other, yes, Commissioner Lautner.
Are you prepared for a motion at this time?
Pardon?
Are you ready for a motion?
I would prefer to hear the proposal from Trudy.
Okay.
If we could.
All right.
If we could go to the proposal from Trudy, and Mr. Pleva did come today, and I did ask Mr. Pleva to join Trudy at the table. Mr. Pleva has been working hard on a solution. Thank you, Trudy.
Sure. Good morning.
Morning.
Trudy Gallant, on the record. Ray Pleva, Mr. Cedar.
Mayor.
Ready to be your mayor?
Mayor.
Sorry, Ray.
Mayor Pleva.
First off, I just want to thank Ray for the unbelievable amount of time that he has put into this to try to locate the site against Cedar. I mean, it's a temporary one for as well as others behind us to try to get new sites. So I won't spend time going back. I want to look at this site and what we possibly can do with Cedar. With regard to some of the questions that are, some of the comments that were brought up, let me start first by just saying that we are going through a process right now with the zoning administrator in Solon for a temporary land use permit on that site. And as part of that, he has had, he has requested drawings, we've got a couple sketches here, that have been done over several times with response to his comments about what we work and not work there. This site has been looked at by GFL, our hauler, by Bunting's, by Bill Bailey, who's the manager at the store there, and then the drawings were sent to the Road Commission and also to Fire Chief, our territory link in the process. The Road Commission contacted me by phone, we went through questions and comments, and they sent a new drawing over of moving the bins and providing alley access and so forth. There's an actual avenue that comes through there. It's not just a parking lot or a back store. There's an alley there. So when all that was done, Ray took that, and he has a gentleman who has graciously been doing these drawings for us, redid the drawings, and those are now back in the hands of the zoning administrator. As of late last night, I think it was, or early this morning, the zoning administrator replied, said, he's waiting for your action on this agreement. So he's got info from the Road Commission, the Fire Chief. I don't believe that any comments. Is that correct, Ray?
Yeah, he was good with it.
Okay.
I told him yesterday, too.
Great. So there is an area on the drawing here. If you want to see it, I'll pass it around. We just have one copy, but it shows the building, it shows what they have there in the back, it shows the alley, where these bins are going to be located. And then the area all to the south has been left alone with a full hurricane and also for snow plowing and snow pile, so some of that the Bunting's have brought up as well. So what you have in front of you today is the cycling agreement, a five recycling agreement, and I have originals here. It has been signed by Phil Bailey, the manager at the store already, and if you are in agreement with it, we're asking for you to approve the five-year agreement today with Bunting's supermarket. Then we get the same lease payment as all the other sites do, which is $3,600 a year.
Okay, before we take a motion, Mr. Pleva, do you want to add anything to that?
Yes. I got offered, you know, what's starting back almost a year ago, when the country was not going to continue on recycling, I just started upon myself to try to find a new site. And we worked with Ronald Laurie Novak, who's west of the post office, and then just recently I was working with Corey Plaskott on the other side. Both sites were wetlands, and we were looking at, we just kind of, one acre, but we'd have to fill a half acre of wetland. And I also spoke with Robin Schmidt from EVO, and she said, you have to look at every spot in the township where there is a dry, dry piece of property big enough to do all this. And so Trudy and I, we went up, we were going up the road all, every direction, trying to figure out whether there'd be another spot. And then Bunting's called and said we might have an opportunity for a recycling site here on our back block. And so Bill, the manager, and I, we measured up one, we had one sketch, and, but that was on the wrong part of the parking area. And what we have it right now is what Bunting's and the owner Greg Bunny all have agreed with. And the recycling company, GFL, has been there and looked at it. I talked with Steve Driver, who empties these tanks, and by putting the way we have them, it's too deep, they'll be able to empty this recycling site twice as fast as the one down by the Cedar River. And it's going to be a lot easier. That whole area that the tanks sit on is asphalt, so that makes it easier to keep up and nice and clean. And there's a spot in the back of the store that if a camera is needed, it can be mounted there. The lot is lit up. The snow plowing is not an issue. Bunting's already looked at that and where the snow will be pushed and everything else. That is taken care of. And by putting them too deep, and we can put in 10 bins, and then the smaller bin, which is lower, and I never knew what that bin was for. And it's for the short people or the people that are disabled. I didn't know that. But it's the same material that goes into the recycling house, anybody that's short can recycle. And Trudy says we got to have it because there's a lady who already called and demanded that bin, so we have it on our sketch.
Okay.
Just in case you get a call from somebody that has that issue. And the county request was that the bins be set back so that when you came in the alley, that you'd be able to pull out the alley and have space between the alley and the bin. So we did that because we have the room. And then they mentioned about striping, and that would be done in this region here available. And so we took care of the county needs. I talked to the Fire Chief. He's 100% safe and fair, all in favor of it. And been working with Tim Cyper for weeks, and he's been really, really helpful. But Mark Palenco, who was a graphic designer, he's also on my Cedar River Waterway committee, and I don't know how many different sketches we had to adjust and make and improve on, but he's been really helpful, and he must have did 20 different sketches designed for me, and Trudy did not get charged a dime for it. So that's pretty damn good. So Trudy said, Ray, we got to find a recycling place, but we can't save any money doing it. So up till today, we have spent that, right?
Right.
So that's one good news. So the site has been approved by the store manager and Greg Bunny at Bunny's Market for a five-year contract. The recycling people have looked at it, and they like the way it's laid out and where it is. And, you know, it's like if the truck is loading the dumpsters, somebody pulls in, well, you got to leave room for that truck to empty the bins. So that's the same, any recycling place that we have in a county. And the other nice thing is that's a county alley that comes in from the north by the post office side, and Bunting's has two other exits, so there's three exits going out of the parking. And that half of the parking area, they only have four, five cars for employees, customers. There's not, they have plenty of parking up on top. And so right now, it looks like it's going to be a one-month period.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lautner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move that Leland County Board of Commissioners accept the agreement between Leland County and Bunting's Cedar Market, Cedar, Michigan, for a county recycling program site as presented. Support.
Any discussion?
I have a question. This agreement that was handed out, is this the entire agreement absent the signature page?
It's the back. We keep them very, very simple.
Is the term mentioned there somewhere, or am I missing it?
Yeah, number five on the bench.
Five.
No, it's four.
An effective date?
Okay, there it is. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes.
So if at any time, we're probably still going to have our feelers out for another possible site, I mean, that never ends, right? I mean, so this agreement allows us to make a decision to terminate this site if a better site would come forward, correct?
Yes, there's a 90-day out. I was supporting the party. And that's slated all the way through.
Okay, so we're going to kind of wait and see, you know, obviously, test out this site, get it all in place and...
This is a five-year agreement, so we're ready to go for a five-year time period. The only other thing that we would need to do, we're looking for a temporary land use permit now, but then we most likely have to go through a special process with the township to be a more detailed design and whatever else that the fire and the recycling companies.
Okay. I would just like to also say that I'm one of the ambassadors at the Cedar site, and I am very proud of the fact that the site, yes, there are occasions, but very little, I would say, contamination with other materials since the ambassadors have been there and the cameras have been posted. So I'm there, and I'm one of the people that care, so I applaud you for your efforts, Ray.
One last comment. What's nice is the recycling moved from the river to Bunting's, and there's no disruption. So if somebody came into town, they would be able to still dump one or the other, and they'd be like, hey, we got to wait six months. And now there's not, we got to work out. And one other comment, we are going to have a roofing cutting ceremony morning when we get it set up because we're damn proud of it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lautner.
Thank you, Ray, for mentioning that there was no disruption because the township board, Solon Township Board, was very helpful in allowing those bins to stay on that site until this morning. Otherwise, they would have had to have been per contract removed, taken into Traverse City, and brought back out, which is an absolute waste of all kinds of resources. So thank you to the township board for allowing them to stay there this long.
Thank you for mentioning that. I was going to do that when Mr. Pleva called me on New Year's Day, and he was in a kind of a panic, and he reached out to the township, and they were gracious to say, well, we can keep those bins there for a week. So thank you. Yes.
Will there be a sign at the old site telling people of the change?
Yeah, we'll make signs in our office. We've had large sales boards with these and land use issues, so we'll get something posted.
Good. Great.
Jamie, and then Melinda, and then Cam.
I just wanted to say thank you both for really stepping up and doing your due diligence and beyond, it sounds like, with this site. We all thank you because this is really important to a lot of citizens. So thanks again.
Myself? Yes, thank you. I had one more point. As far as sites go, someone asked about looking for new sites. I would say, Trudy, an ongoing. We continue to look for a site in Leland. We don't have any site up on that whole quadrant of the county, so it'd be great to have a site up in Leland. We've been years trying to get a site there and can't cite one. Pop Road came up again. We continue to occasionally, Centreville Township may be a great, another future site. We've got the intersection there where Sugar Puts is. It's all paved, it's all open, easy for trucks. That may be a great potential site up there if Cleveland...
That may be a great potential site up there if Cleveland, or if Centreville, Centreville chooses to decide to host the site. So any township is welcome to host a site, contact Trudy, and she'll be more than happy to get that set up.
I contacted each supervisor.
I know.
Centreville, Leland, Casson, and they said all roads, not part of the county, leave the Cedar.
You recognize it, they just didn't want to...
They like, they want the post office, they want the money that hired the store, or underway the traders, and it just worked out very well. But if somebody wants to pull one up, God bless them.
Yep.
Are we ready to vote?
I just have one other question. Thank you. Offense, did we decide on the possibility, or...
We're checking on that.
Okay.
It's definitely a possibility.
I will be bringing that up to the township at the next board meeting, that we'd be willing to, not at their expense, but to remove it and move it away.
Commissioner Rourke?
I would sure like to see some cameras in place. I know at Elmwood, we've had copies amongst problems, people dropping off pianos and tires and things. Also, all these containers, they drain into the Cedar wetlands, right? Every one of them, that's where. Just be careful with that, that's why we need to monitor if you throw something in those dumpsters, and we've seen a lot of hazardous stuff. You know, we have two trout streams up the way towards Maple City. And we had such a problem in Elmwood, I don't know, is there a certain time that the truck is going to come in and empty those, Trudy, or can you work with that, or...
We will work that out with them.
Okay. Because Elmwood, we had to actually put some plastic chain up, keep the people, because he would be backing up the truck, and they'd pull in behind him and stuff, and it's, you know, if you get him in there and let him do his job and get out of there.
We want to put GFL on all of this.
Thank you.
Trudy, do you want to respond to Jim's question about the cameras?
Bunting's has cameras right now in Centreville.
No, they, it would all, it would all come up on the back of the store, they have my money, and so it'd be real, you know, relative to set that up.
It has been extremely helpful in Elmwood, our cameras, extremely helpful.
Okay, we ready to vote? All those in support of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes, seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Trudy.
We're going to take a short break before the next meeting, but before we do that, we have another public comment period, if anybody wishes to make public comment. Any commissioner comment?
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray.
Motion to adjourn for five minutes?
So moved.
Thank you.